Kolleginnen und Kollegen, ich denke, wir sind bereit, unser schönes Reisen durch Insularität in den Inseln zu beginnen. Wir werden über die Herausforderungen der Inseln sprechen, aber wir werden auch darüber nachdenken, was im Sommer mit den Inseln passiert, und nicht nur im Sommer. Dieses öffentliche Debattation ist, wie ich sagte, über Insularität, socioökonomische Entwicklung, das Rolle der Zivilgesellschaft, um die Herausforderungen der Inseln zu beantworten. Dieses öffentliche Debattation findet im Rahmen unserer eigenen initiativen Meinung, ECO 612, Hauptfelder der EU-Inseln und der wälderweiten und sparsam populierten Bereiche statt. Wir haben ein sehr interessantes Panel von sehr kompetenten Rednern, Herrn Borg, Präsident des Geschäftsamtes der Gozo-Inseln aus Malta, Eleftherios Tschechaioglu, Präsident der griechischen Kleinen Insel Network und Frau Frantera aus der Hotel Federation aus Mallorca. Ich will das Thema eingeben. Wie Sie gelesen haben, bin ich dieser Meinung. Ich möchte zunächst danken, dass die Redner, die mit uns sind, und alle von Ihnen für diese sehr wichtige, meiner Meinung nach, heutige Debatte teilnehmen, die unsere Meinung eröffnen wird. Bitte nehmen Sie den Platz und teilnehmen Sie die Diskussion, die wir später, nach den Beteiligungen, haben werden. Dies ist der zweite öffentliche Debattation, die wir in der Hinsicht organisierten, wie ich sagte, ECO 612. Der erste Debattation wurde organisiert und in Norddeutschland, in Umea, geführt, wo die Aufmerksamkeit auf sparsam populierte Bereiche gelegt wurde. Heute, wie wir bereits gesagt haben, fokussieren wir uns auf EU-Inseln, die viele Mittel haben, deren Potenzial besser realisiert werden sollte. Als Person, selbst ein Inselner, stamme ich aus der schönen und sehr grünen Insel Zakintoß in der Ionian Sea. Ich bin von Geburt an geweint, wie wichtig die Inseln für mein Land und für die ganze Europa sind. Lassen Sie mich Ihnen einige Zahlen und Fakten geben. Die Inselregionen der Europäischen Union haben eine estimierte Bevölkerungszahl von mehr als 20 Millionen. Das ist 4,6 % der Gesamtbevölkerung der EU. Die Inselbevölkerung der EU ist über ca. 2.400 Inseln, die zu 13 Mitgliedstaaten gehören, und drei EU-Mitgliedsstaaten sind selbst Inselstaaten. Ireland, Malta und Sybros. Davor gesprochen, ist Insularität als permanente und unveränderbare geografische Eigenschaft, die zusätzliche Kosten, Transport, Energie, Warenmanagement, öffentliche Dienste, notwendige Waren und Dienste usw. beinhaltet, die die Entwicklung und Kompetenz der Inseln verhindern, während sie besonders an Biodiversität, Klimawandel und andere Bedingungen entgegenstellt. Inseln haben eine exceptionell reiche Biodiversität und Ökosysteme, wobei Inselnökosysteme besonders von dem Schaden des Klimawandels gefährdet werden, und sollten geschützt werden. Die ESC hat in ihrer explorativen Meinung, die von der Malta-Präsentation 2017 gefordert wurde, drei Dimensionen, die Insularität definieren: Kleinheit, Fernheit und Leistung. Diese Dimensionen wurden in Sachen Analyse fortgeschritten, um den Herausforderungen der EU-Inseln zu berücksichtigen, wie folgt: Stärken, Qualität der Lebensmittel, die Präsenz einer hohen Densität natürlicher und kultureller Kapitalität und einer starken kulturellen Identität als potenzielle Quellen für neue Gewinne und Beschäftigung in den Inseln. Schwächen, begrenzte Zugangslage, begrenzte öffentliche Interessendienste, begrenzte private Dienste und Netzwerke, Lohnlosigkeit von SCA und Marktorganisation. Möglichkeiten, die Anforderung der Qualität der Lebensmittel, der Qualität von sicheren Lebensmittelprodukten, spezifische Interessen, Tourismus und residenziale Dienste. Und letzten Endes, Gefahren: Klimawandel, Globalisierung, wirtschaftliche Krise, steigende Energiepreise, Wasserhass, Bodenvergradung und der Ausstau von Fischenspähle. Innerhalb des bereits nennen wirten Kontexts, viele der Herausforderungen, über die wir diskutieren, für unsere Gesellschaften sind eher für Inseln formuliert. Diese beinhalten wirtschaftliche Herausforderungen, Verknüpfung und Zugangslage-Herausforderungen, grüne und ökologische Herausforderungen, soziale Herausforderungen und Regierungs- Herausforderungen. Diese Herausforderungen müssen zu Möglichkeiten und Chancen für eine bessere Lebens- Wachstum und Rückgabe für unsere Inseln transformiert werden. Das ist der Grund, warum wir stark glauben, dass wichtige Politikbereiche, wie der Markt, Konkurrenzpolitik, Transportpolitik, ruralere Entwicklungspolitik und Fischereipolitik müssen mit einem höheren Grad Flexibilität verwendet werden, wenn es um Inselnökonomie geht. Man kann nicht nur auf Kohäsionspolitik abhängen, um die erforderlichen Ziele zu erreichen. Dann sollten Zivilgesellschaftsorganisationen zusammen mit lokalen Akteuren ein wichtiger Rolle spielen. Geschäftsführer und Handelsvereine sollten auch in diesem Zusammenhang sehr aktiv sein. Ich denke, ich habe einige Vorstellungsmittel gegeben, um heute unsere Redner zu begrüßen. Ich möchte mit dem Präsidenten von Insular, Herrn Borg beginnen. Wie ich sagte, ist er Präsident des Geschäftsamtes der Gozo-Inseln aus Malta. Herr Borg, Ihr Platz.
Guten Morgen an alle. Danke, Herr Johannes Vardakastanis, für Ihre Einleitung und für die Ankunft aus dem Herzen eines Inselner. Ich appreciere wirklich Ihre Einleitung. Danke. Und danke Ihnen auch für die Befreiung von uns dieses Morgen in dieser ESC-Plattform, die zur Diskussion dieses wichtigen Themas zugestimmt wurde, und für die Einladung bis zu Insular. Wie Herr Johannes vorhin sagte, ist Insular die Assoziation, die die Geschäftsamts von Handel und Industrie der europäischen Inseln gruppieren. Wir sind heute hier wegen unserer Sorge um die Inseln, in denen wir leben. Wir, Zivilgesellschaftsorganisationen, haben ein wichtiger Rolle zu spielen, um die Zukunft unserer Insel zu schaffen. Zum Schluss begrüße ich die präliminäre Drucksprecherin der ESC über die Hauptfelder der EU-Inseln, wälderweiten und sparsam populierten Bereiche, die andere Meinungen von der ESC gestellt wurden und wichtige Probleme und Fragen der Inseln beantworten. Die COVID-19-Pandemie hat solche Probleme und Fragen auf den Punkt gebracht. In Bezug darauf glaube ich, dass wir zu einem Punkt gekommen sind, wo diese Fragen behandelt werden müssen. Wir können nicht länger prokrastinieren. Zivilgesellschaft ist allgemein definiert als alle Formen von sozialer Aktion, die durch Individuen oder Gruppen getrieben werden, die niemals von staatlichen Autoritäten befasst sind oder von staatlichen Autoritäten gesteuert werden. In diesem Kontext spielen Zivilgesellschaftsorganisationen ein wichtiger Rolle als Medier zwischen öffentlichen Autoritäten und Bürger. Besonders das, versucht Zivilgesellschaften auf Inseln, auch in vielen Bereichen, die von staatlichem Verhalten verbleiben, weder finanziell, sozial noch kulturell. Heute diskutieren wir den Rolle der Zivilgesellschaft, um die Herausforderungen, die wir auf unseren Inseln beantworten, zu beantworten, in Bezug auf die Themen, die in der präliminären Drucksprecherin bereits erwähnt wurde. Aber sind diese Herausforderungen von Inseln aus, aus sozioökonomischer Perspektive behandelt? Was sind diese Herausforderungen? Diese sind bereits sehr gut in Punkt 3.4 der Drucksprecherin angezeigt worden. Trotzdem möchte ich ihre Wichtigkeit weiterhin hervorheben. Zunächst einmal ist es der Kostenpfund, ein Insel zu sein. In einem Buch, veröffentlichtes vom Regierungsbüro der Balearek-Inseln in der Europäischen Union, Carl Manera Urbina, zeigt, dass der Kostenpfund, den Markt Zugang zu bekommen, viel höher ist, als bei Inselnekonomien. Der Transport von Waren selbst ist zwischen zwei und vier Mal teurer als auf dem Kontinent. Deshalb sind die Vertriebskosten für Rohstoffe, die höher sind, und die Abkürzung von frischen Produkten und Verlängerte, die durch die Nichtrealisierung von Seevoyagen wegen Wetterbedingungen verursacht werden, cruciale Faktoren, die einen direkten Effekt auf die Kompetenz der Inselproduktion haben. Zweitens ist es die Abhängigkeit von spezifischen wirtschaftlichen Sektoren. Wenn die wirtschaftliche Entwicklungstrajekte von Inseln auszeichnet werden, könnten folgende纹zeichen sein: a) der Abfall des Agrarsektors, b) ein ungewöhnlicher Industriepattern und c) der Wachstum des Dienstsektors, gesperrt prinzipiell durch die zunehmende Wichtigkeit des Tourismus auf Inseln. Das ist eine Sorge, die Insular mehrmals markiert hat, insbesondere mit dem Ausbruch der COVID-19-Pandemie. Inselnekonomien sind abhängig vom Tourismus, erhöhten ihre Fragilität, weil ihre Wirtschaft von den Unsicherheiten abhängt, die dieser hoch volatile Markt mit bringt. Wie in einem Bericht, das für den Europäischen Parlamentkomitee zur Regionalentwicklung vorbereitet wurde, zitiere ich, die COVID-19-Pandemie hat den devastativen Wirtschaftsschaden auf Inseln, die auf Tourismussektor hängen, als ihre Hauptwirtschaft. Drittens ist Insularität ein determinierender Faktor für die socioökonomische Entwicklung auf Inseln. In seiner neuesten Überprüfung der Insel Gotland, die von OECD 2022 gemacht wurde, lieferte eine sehr interessante Analyse von Inseln aus einer socioökonomischen Perspektive. Aus einer wirtschaftlichen Sicht identifizierte sie folgende Herausforderungen: Erstens, die Lohnlosigkeit einer kritischen Masse, sowohl im Marktmaß als auch in der Produktion. Zweitens, geografische Isolation und Transportkosten. Drittens, Themen, die mit der Integration mit nationalen Kommunikations- und Energienetwerten verbunden sind. Viertens, geringe Innovationslabel. Und letzten Endes, die Lohnlosigkeit qualifierter Arbeit und professioneller Entwicklung. Auf der anderen Seite zeigte sie auch die folgenden Möglichkeiten: dies being: diverse Tourismusangebote auf Inseln. Zweitens, hohe Qualität und diverses Lebensmittelproduktionsmaß. Drittens, entrepreneurialischer Geist und resistenten Gedanken. Und letzten Endes, blauer Wirtschaft. Dann, aus einer sozialen und institutionellen Perspektive, wurden die folgenden Herausforderungen identifiziert: erstens, eine ältere Bevölkerung, auslaufende Migration und Gehirnschrott. Zweitens, der hohe Kosten für Dienste. Drittens, die Wirtschaftsmaßnahme von SCA, die zu höheren Einheitskosten führt, um die erforderliche Infrastruktur zu schaffen und öffentliche Dienste zu bieten. Auf der anderen Seite, wieder aus einer sozialen und institutionellen Sicht, wurden die folgenden Möglichkeiten identifiziert: erstens, eine bessere Qualität der Lebensmittel, zweitens, engste soziale Beziehungen und Gemeinschaftsstrukturen, und letzten Endes, die Attraktivität des Territoriums und seine distinctive kulturelle Heritage. Mit all diesen, stimmt Insular mit Punkt 3.10 der Drucksprecherin, die vorschlägt, dass die GdP-Kriterien nicht der einzige sind, die die Entwicklung auf Inseln bestimmen sollten. Dies aligniert sich mit der Diskussion, die Insular morgen hat, auch mit der ESC, die spezifisch die Notwendigkeit von verschiedenen Datenindikatoren für Inseln diskutiert wird. Es muss ein凭据实证的approach geben, der die Politik für Inseln bestimmen sollte. Aber was ist das Rolle der Zivilgesellschaft, um die Herausforderungen, die Inseln beantworten zu beantworten? In der Antwort auf diese Frage möchte ich eine Meinung des Europäischen Wirtschafts- und Sozialkomitees aus dem Jahr 2017 zitieren, die zeigte, dass, zitiere ich, in Hinzufügung zu firmen politischen Unterstützung, die Herausforderungen, die die EU-Inseln in den kommenden Jahren haben werden, auch eine größere Teilnahme der Zivilgesellschaft und soziale Partner in der Prozesse für eine neue Strategie für Inseln brauchen. Ich glaube immer noch, dass diese Aussage heute sehr relevant ist. Aber was soll die Rolle der Zivilgesellschaft nehmen? Erstens, Advocacy und Representation. Zivilgesellschaftsorganisationen sollten auf die Spezifikkeitsforderungen der Inseln bewusst werden und Lobbyisten für Änderungen der Politik und Unterstützung von nationalen Regierungen und der EU, um die Stimmen und Bedürfnisse der Inselkommunen zu hören und in Entscheidungsprozessen in Kauf zu nehmen. Insular ist ein solcher Beispiel, der eine Stimme bietet, um Geschäftsführer auf Inseln zu repräsentieren, an EU-Niveau. Zum Beispiel reagiert Insular auf die vorgeschlagene Erreinigung der Steuerentlassung auf Flugzeug- und Marittimflut. Insular argumentiert, dass dies zur Reduktion der Anforderung für Flugreise zwischen Passagieren zu EU-Inseln beiträgt, und dass dies einen signifikanten negativen Schaden auf die Inseln, die Wirtschaft und die Kompetenz, die ihre Abhängigkeit vom Tourismus haben, beeinflussen wird. Es zeigte auch, wie diese Vorschläge die Freiheit des Bewegens der Menschen auf Inseln beeinflussen werden, weil sie ihre Kosten für Flüge erhöhen. Insular argumentiert auch, dass dies den Marittimtransport beeinflussen wird und deshalb die Kosten für Transport von Waren zu und von Inseln erhöhen. Zweitens, ermutigend und engagierend Inselkommunen. Zivilgesellschaftsorganisationen unterstützen auch Dialog und Zusammenarbeit zwischen verschiedenen Interessen, inklusive lokaler Regierungen, Geschäftsführer und Residenz, um die Politiken, Projekte und Initiativen inklusiv und reagierend auf die spezifischen Bedürfnisse der Inseln zu sicherstellen. Drittens, die Zivilgesellschaft sollte als Kraft für positiven Veränderungen agieren. Zivilgesellschaften auf Inseln sind ein wichtiger Element, um Bewusstsein zu erhöhen und Handlungen über Umweltbeschutz zu machen, inklusive der Präsenz der Inselnökosysteme und der Erstellung von lernbasierten Praktiken, wie in der Warenmanagement und der Nutzung erneuerbarer Energien. Viertens, die Zivilgesellschaften versuchen, Inselskulturen zu erhalten und zu fördern. Der Volontärsektor der Inseln ist oft sehr aktiv, um eine Inselskultur zu erhalten, zu schaffen und zu fördern, durch lokale Festivals und andere kulturelle Veranstaltungen. Fünftens, Kenntnisteilen und Netzwerken an lokalem, nationalen und internationalen Niveau. Zivilgesellschaften haben eine Menge Erfahrung, die über die Jahre in ihrem Bereich der Kompetenz er积累了. Sie teilen dann dieses Wissen sowohl mit der lokalen Gemeinschaft als auch mit nationalen Regierungen, insbesondere wenn es um Finanzierung und die Findung effektiver politischer Lösungen für bestimmte Herausforderungen geht. Trotzdem können Zivilgesellschaftsorganisationen auch auf supranationaler Niveau beeinflusst werden, wenn sie sich für ein bestimmtes Ziel vereinbaren. Und Insular ist ein Beispiel, wie es die Geschäftsamts und Industrie der Inseln in der Europäischen Union zusammengesetzt. Zum Schluss glauben wir, dass die kommende Meinung der ESC auch in die Regierungsperspektive beteiligen sollte, für den formalen Engagement von Zivilgesellschaftsorganisationen auf Inseln in der Politikabrechnung. Heute bleibt die Repräsentation innerhalb der Grenzen der Mitgliedstaaten, die beteiligt sind, und Zivilgesellschaftsorganisationen auf Inseln sind nicht immer beteiligt, um die vorgeschlagenen politischen Lösungen zu leiten, die die Herausforderungen normalerweise von Inseln beantworten. Während die Rolle der Zivilgesellschaft extrem wichtig ist, um die Herausforderungen, die Inseln beantworten, ist es auch wichtig, dass die Europäische Union diese Herausforderungen durch eine flexiblen Politikrahmen und -abrechnung beschäftigt, die die Linien und die Bedenken einzig und für alle insularer Dimension akzeptiert. Die COVID-19-Pandemie hat gezeigt, dass, wenn die Europäische Union ihr Ansatz für bestimmte Herausforderungen anzupassen war, sie es war, es war in der Lage, sie zu überwinden. Trotzdem ist die Richtigkeit, mit der Inseln behandelt werden, die sehr gute Arbeit der Zivilgesellschaftsorganisationen, wie Insular, auf dem Boden tut. Der Staatengesetzrahmen und die aktuellen Minimumsregeln sind zum Beispiel ein solcher Politikabrechnung, die die spezifischen Herausforderungen der Inseln nicht akzeptiert. Wir sind in einer Situation, in der es komplett unter der Discretion der Mitgliedstaaten bleibt, um die spezifischen Herausforderungen ihrer Inseln zu akzeptieren. Alternativ, wenn die Mitgliedstaat versucht, die Herausforderungen der Inseln zu beantworten, ist es stoppt von spezifischen Regeln, wie dem Minimumsrahmen, die die Möglichkeiten beschränkt, wie viel es an Unternehmen auf Inseln helfen kann. Zivilgesellschaftsorganisationen, wie Insular an EU-Niveau und ihre Geschäftsamts an nationalen Niveau, haben eine Menge Kenntnis und Expertise in ihrem Bereich der Kompetenz. Deshalb ist es wichtig, dass sowohl die EU- als auch die nationalen Regierungen involviert und mit Zivilgesellschaften beteiligt werden. involve and engage with civil society organisations to come out with policy solutions which can really benefit islands. Thank you very much for your attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Borg, for a very, very interesting presentation. And I tell you also, as a rapporteur, very useful for the opinion we are working on. I will speak Greek now. I will speak Greek to welcome my good friend, Elifterios Kechayoglu.
I would now like to give the floor to a good friend. We've worked together before. Mr Elifterios Kechayoglu. He's the president of the Hellenic Small Islands Network. Beautiful parts of Greece with many, many visitors at this time of year. Elifteris will talk about these islands, the challenges they have to deal with and the opportunities, as well as their special charm and attraction. Elifteris, you have the floor. Thank you very much, Chairman. Well, first of all, let me present myself. I'm Elifterios Kechayoglu. I'm the president of the Hellenic Small Islands Network. I come from a small island myself, one of the most attractive to tourists. And for a year now, I've been awarded the title of ambassador of the Climate Pact, the EU Climate Pact for Greece. It's a great honour and a great responsibility. And it forces us to think about how to deal with environmental issues. I would like to thank my good friend, Mr Verda Castanis. I have known him for decades. Mr Meleas and all the administrators, all your experts, your team. You allow the voice of islands to be heard, including small islands, because we believe that this type of forum is of great support for all European islands. We've listened to a lot of very interesting things and we agree on all the points made, both by Mr Verda Castanis and the president of Insular, our good friend Joseph Borg. And in spite of the fact that I'm between two speakers representing the business world, the positive element for me was that Mr Borg talked about and referred to civil society repeatedly. Let me talk about the opinion and I will give you specific facts and figures so that you can identify the points we want to talk about. I will speak freely. And then, we can of course send our comments in writing so that you can keep a record. Let me begin by referring to point two, three. I'm referring to your opinion, which, and the objective for you and for us, is to maintain this insular character of islands, especially small islands. Of course, we're talking about EU islands in this case. We agree with the fact that in spite of the different policies implemented so far at EU level, we have not managed to turn those into actions implemented at island level. Two, seven, in the opinion, does reflect this. And we fully share this view, as expressed in two, seven, that we need to propose integrated, comprehensive solutions, if possible, to each individual island through EU policies and through their competences at island level. Please allow me to show you this photograph. What you see here is one of the most famous islands. It's Hydra, Hydra, a very famous island. This is how people move. They use donkeys. No cars are allowed on the island of Hydra. It's just one and a half hours from the capital, from the port of Piraeus in Athens. And this is, it's one of the most sustainable and environmentally friendly islands, given construction materials as well. We have the smallest percentage of cement used for the buildings, with a lot of stone and wood used for our constructions. You would imagine that based on horizontal EU policies, the island of Hydra should be at the forefront when it comes to implementing EU programmes and so on. But the exact opposite is true in this case. If you look at legislation implemented by the state, it makes development in this island even harder. So these problems give rise to the phenomenon where we see young people abandoning the island. And I want to point something out here. Based on census data from Greece and other member states, but I want to focus on Greece especially, from nineteen fifty-one until today, fifty small islands have been left empty, without any inhabitants. If we keep on implementing this type of policy for the next twenty years, we would expect another sixteen islands to be left without inhabitants. And that's the equivalent of thirty percent of today's occupied Cyprus. It corresponds to that territory. So if the state wants to implement laws that would affect islands the way it does now, well, the damage can be greater than the damage inflicted by an enemy invading an island. This is the point I'm trying to make. So we have to see islands as a separate unity. And very often, at European fora, we are asked the following question: we understand the difference between a small island and a major municipality, but can you show us what's the difference between a very small island and a larger island? Because let's not forget, and I'm talking about two, twelve in the opinion here, we're talking about double insularity. But how can you highlight this aspect in a small island when you do not have the scientific data to prove this? And I'm talking about indicators in this context. And when we talk about indicators, what kind of indicators? Is it economic indicators only? No, we need smart indicators reflecting the sustainability aspect within a society. If I had to choose among indicators, I would opt for the sustainability index in small islands. And by this, I mean the age criterion, the age groups of people living and working, starting businesses in an island. This is the most important aspect, in my view. If we were to think about the nuts context, I would propose a nuts four: business activity in small islands, population in small islands or de-industrialised areas. This is an indicator for the future and explains how we can support islands in Greece and in Europe. So now, let's move beyond two fifteen and look at EU islands. That's three, one, three, two, in the opinion. Well, I want to focus on the following aspect here. According to the EU, in order to provide support to an island, they should meet certain criteria, one kilometre away from land and so on. And there's a population criterion, fifth of fifty inhabitants on an island. Let me give you a couple of examples. A small island with forty-five inhabitants, or any number you wish, below fifty, but during the summer season, because of tourism, you may have thirty times the number of inhabitants and go above one thousand five hundred in some cases. So, in your view, unless you provide support from the EU for an island like that, the state, which type of island should they take into account? If you think about watering or sewage, should they focus on, should they see this as an island with forty inhabitants or an island with a thousand and five hundred inhabitants? But for those larger islands, no support is provided, according to EU rules. You may have islands with a much larger population, way above one thousand, but less than half stay during the winter. So you see two different islands. The situation is different during the summer months and they get very different treatments from the EU that do not reflect their true needs and situation. One more thing on two small European Greek islands and it will become clear how important they are in the context of the economic activity zone and the continuity provided from the broader region, from Cyprus to Ireland. And I'm referring to Castel Orizon, a tiny island. But this is the furthermost read part in Greece. If you leave aside Castel Orizon and try to find another area of critical importance, this is Kasos, another small island just below the island of Karpathos. Without Kasos, there would be a broader basin within Greek territorial waters that would allow other countries to enter. So if you think of the security aspect, the entrepreneurship aspect, those small islands are extremely important. We have the same type of problem in the north of Europe, Estonia, so that I don't focus on the south only. If you look at three, four, in the opinion, and the size of smaller islands, the distance from other areas and vulnerability. In our view, the fifty inhabitants criterion should not apply in those cases so that those islands could get support. The distance criterion is equally important. Let me provide an example of a small island within a lake, approximately three hundred and fifty metres from land. But when winds are very strong, above four, above, and I'm referring to the lake of Ioanea and the small island within the lake, for ten to fourteen days, there was no connection due to heavy winds. So a very important aspect here is to take into account the double insularity criterion. And we have one proposal to make about the way in which we could provide solutions at EU level for this double insularity that affects a small island's abilities to provide support and claim funding and EU projects. When an EU project is accessible at national or EU level, some provisions should be made for certain small islands especially. A different time period should be made available to them if they are in a position to participate in the project and apply. One more example to do with competitiveness. The EU could provide horizontal support to a larger island, but this works, turns out, to be really negative in the case of smaller islands. If you think of a larger municipality, land-based, where the EU provides support for an energy project and two or three miles away from there, you have a small island with one thousand five hundred inhabitants who is trying to convince a businessman to operate a plant on the island. So what happens in those cases? The generous funding provided by the EU from the city nearby becomes a disadvantage for this smaller island. So once again, the EU or each member state should come up with specific programmes designed for those small islands, providing support, so that we don't have to keep trying to catch up with current programmes, because we will be dealing with this issue in the future. Let me conclude by providing specific data and information on societies in small islands and the smart indicators we need to promote these procedures. Talking about local societies, the local society, community in a small island, how can you reflect this without the right kind of indicator? The answer is simple: it's not expressed at all. Young people, how can they express their views? A young person that will grow up and abandon the island, how can you stop this happening when you've shown no interest in understanding why they're forced to leave their islands? So for us, and this is my final point, the need for specific projects focusing on smart indicators, reflecting society and business activity, entrepreneurship, that's a very important aspect, because to maintain live local communities in an island, you need to keep entrepreneurship alive. These are not competing aspects, but complementary and they would, they're a requirement for young people to stay in their islands and society to remain vital. I'm available for a discussion and any questions about how to provide support to islands, because these horizontal approaches have led to problems in our islands. We want to see solutions tailored-made to the needs of each island. Once again, thank you very much, Chairman, for all your work in favour of small islands and your future work, because there's a lot to be done still. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr Kechayoglu. Thank you for this excellent presentation. Thank you for the examples you gave and for the work you've done and how thoroughly you've studied the draft opinion so far. This is a very important contribution.
Give the floor to Mrs Maria Frontera, president of the Hotel Business Federation of Mallorca. The floor is yours. Thank you for your presence here.
Thank you very much, Mr President. And I'm delighted to be here with you. A pleasure for the invitation and to share it with my colleagues. And I really share many of the, all the conclusions and all the points that they have delighted, highlighted as weaknesses and many things in common, of course, in the islands here. I would like, sorry, to start with a presentation. I'm the president of the Hotel Federation in Mallorca. As you probably all well know, Mallorca is the biggest island of the Ballyhary Islands. And we want to talk about the different challenges we have identified. Mostly, we have been talking here with my colleagues: demographics, connectivity, economy, the social, of course, importance that we have for our society, environment and also governance. Our main objective right now, a part of being sustainable and looking for a much better sustainable tourism, is to regenerate, not only being sustainable, but looking for that generative tourism. As we are change agents, we have been talking here about the social organisations and we can tell you that we have a very good experience in the Ballyhary Islands, working with the governments, the local, the ones from the islands and also the national one. As soon as we have good alliances and we share common objectives, we can be successful on achieving them. Here you have an explanation on who we represent in Mallorca: more than two hundred thousand beds, eight hundred forty hotels. And these are just some numbers, because as you may know, Mallorca is overpopulated. We have been talking about some islands that don't have exactly that problem, but the other extreme problem, as they were leaving the islands. Our island, in our islands, the population has been growing in the last twenty years more than forty percent, more near fifty percent. So we are dealing here with a big, it's not a threat, I think I would say we can manage it, but we have to be very aligned, all the ones that we are managing, the different parts on the islands. I mean, the government, the public administration and the private sector. We knew that we had to make a big change in the Ballyhary Islands many years ago, trying to find a better balance between the residents and the visitors. How can we survive? In, you know, last, two thousand and nineteen, we had sixteen million visitors in our islands. And back now, we are nearly on the same numbers again. We have been trying for the last ten years to move towards growing in value and not growing in volume. It's very easy to say, but very difficult to achieve it. But I can tell you that we have done, at least at the hotel sector, we have invested more than three million euros just in the island of Mallorca to change the quality of the hotels. And that means changing a media of three-star rating hotels ten years ago and now more than seventy percent are four and five-star category hotels. So that means a big achievement for us. To try to prolong the season, you may remember that, of course, the tourism in the southern Europe is very seasonable. To try to prolong the season, you may remember that, of course, the tourism in the Southern Europe is very seasonable, but we are reaching now a more months of tourist activity. This last uh May, we were uh above more than six hundred thousand affiliates. So now our our unemployment rate is four point five, never achieved before. So you can see, we are also sharing with the rest of the islands a lack of labor. This is a global need, so at the service sector. But still, we are trying to combine it with investment in technology and trying to achieve um the best to give a better service to our visitor, but it's really a big challenge right now. Uh, well, demographics, I were talking, I was just explaining the overpopulation we have. Connectivity, my colleagues also mentioned that, uh, we have a good connectivity, it's completely recovered. We are connected with more than hundred and thirty cities around Europe and also coming um the new connectivity directly with Newark in USA. That has become a really successful uh connectivity last year, and this year has prolonged some more weeks. So it is important uh that to know that most of our visitors come from Europe, but we are having new opportunities with other markets. And I think we should always try to find that balance, because we know that it's also costly for the environment to come with a long uh distance uh flights. But we have to try to see what is the the best equilibrium on that. We were talking always about the single European sky approval. This uh is not understandable right now that we haven't achieved that, because it's needed for the environment, it's needed to be more efficient, it's needed to be uh also less costly for many reasons. So we have to try to approach that as soon as possible. Also, of course, the taxes for the aviation, it will have a big impact on the islands in the future. And they have to be careful, because the consequences on the islands will be ginormous. More than ninety-five percent of the traffic of the visitors we have in the Balearec Islands, and most of the islands probably is coming on traffic, air air traffic. So this will be a disadvantage uh and a threat for us. Insularity cost, my colleagues mentioned about that, production cost, overcost, transportation, funnel price impact. So we have to be careful also with that, with the new policies of being approved at the parliament. I think one, uh, the best asset we have in the Balearec Islands is our specialization, uh, which is uh an added value for us, that is being much more sophisticated in the last years. And we have more than reduced the tourist activity, we have more uh the our objective should be to potentiate uh that high value that we have as a specialized territory. Um, building, of course, alliances with other sectors and other territories, it is important. One of prosperity, well, society, of course. How can we not talk about generating welfare in our society? I think it is important to know that we have applied a lot of technology and digitalization in our private uh businesses. But we can see that the public administration is not uh having the same speed. And that lack of speed there is contrary on the welfare of our society. I think we need to be more aligned on that and try to help them. We need to reinforce the upskilling and reskilling, and digitalization is really important on that. So we need it at the public administration. One of our main challenges, and I think is is shared in most of the islands where we have so many visitor, is the housing. We have a lack of housing and for our all productivity sectors and also public administration for police, for judges, for uh health, our health system, I mean, this is really our main uh challenge. Mobility and public transport is also a big challenge. It has to be, of course, more sustainable, and we have to work more here. And we need the right policies to encourage that and incentives on that. We have, of course, many unsolved challenges, but we are working all together. And to improve that quality uh for the residents and for the visitors, it is really important to work all very aligned. It is important not to prohibit, but to find uh balances and agreements. And mostly to have a strategic plan uh that is general for the whole Balearec Islands, and it's overlooked by the national government and also from the EU, so we can all work on parallel uh roads. The multi-level cooperation, it is very important. During the COVID uh crisis in Mallorca, as in other islands, everything stopped. Our GDP went down more than twenty-three percent. Still nowadays, we have not recovered, we think we will recover this year twenty twenty-three. But it wa- it had a big impact. And uh we couldn't be with the arms crossed. So we tried to work, as we were seeing that April was passing and nearly May, and EU was not coming or agreed on travel uh or the the same norms. So we tried to put in um the pilot plan, I don't know if we we call it like that in English, but we had to agree, at least the Germans' government and Spanish government agreed to help the Balearec Islands to try to be the first one opening for the international tourist visitors. It was difficult, but it was not impossible. So we thought, if we want to be open and working in July, we have to put a date at least in June, mid-June, to try to see how the health and safety protocols were implemented, if they work, to show the whole world that this was going to be possible. It's true that the COVID was a threat, and we have to be respectful. And of course, the priority was the sanitary indication, but we had to do something. We cannot be just waiting to see how everybody was going to to agree on some norms. Because in Mallorca, the season will just pass, and one year without tourist visitors in the island was a disaster. As you can see, it was twenty-three percent GDP fall, and we could be open some months twenty twenty, but nearly less than fifty percent of the businesses could be open. So that gave us a thirty-five uh million advertising impact, and it reached more than fifty-eight million people. And because of that, the next season, twenty twenty-one, was successful, or at least was the beginning of that recovery. So the alliances are very important. When we work together, public administration and private sector, we do have successful results. Uh, as I was uh telling you before, um, sustainable tourism is not the only objective we have right now. We have to have a a further vision, at least long-term vision. We need to regenerate what um because of the negative externalities that we have seen during these years, we have to do much more than just uh looking for a better sustainable tourism. We uh decided to be, this is very ambitious, the first uh circular destination, uh tourist destination in the world. Very difficult, because at the moment, it's just the hotel sector that is working on that uh priority. But to tell you the truth, we have the tools the given by the Impulsa Foundation, which is a platform, a strategic knowledge that analyzes three hundred fifteen regions. I welcome you to check on that Impulsa Foundation, because it has really match uh many data that you could also check for all the different territories you represent here. And it has a touristy tourism competitive index, and it indicates um the comparison on all those territories on different uh indicators. Uh, the that foundation checked the circular progress in our Balearec Islands and saw that the hotel uh industry was half away of that progress. So we were really uh attracted of the rest of the tourist uh um chain of value. If we tracked to them, maybe we could inspire them if we started to uh achieve that uh circularity plan in our hotels. The foundation uh Impulsa created two tools, eCircuit. It is a tool that measures and gives you a photo of the hotel with certain indicators and tells you from where you start. And then you can create your uh circularity plan for five years with your own KPIs. You can measure the evol- the evolution of it, and of course, if you're not achieving, maybe you can uh just re- readapt the objectives you have, but you have to continue to evaluate. If you don't evaluate, measure and evaluate, you cannot uh achieve uh those objectives. Right now, with that eCircuit and the circularity guide, all the sector is uh working on the same base, using the same terminology, so we can all compare the same result in all the Balearec Islands. I think it is important when we talk about that, because we all have some subjective perspectives. And we have to try to find data that can um show the evolution of all the sectors. Um, if we talk about regenerative tourism, you will see we work on water, materials, energy, food, transport, territory and see. I think we all agree on all those uh pillars that we are working to try to advance on that sustainable tourism. It is important to activate these value creation levers. If I have to talk about uh all those uh uh three thousand million of euros that I said we invested in in the Mallorca Islands, we immediately saw that uh to to try to take the best of that investment, we should also have a good uh teams of maintenance at the hotels. The lack of training on maintenance, and we didn't have any specific school dedicated on that, even public or even private. So we created a school, which is now a successful school, not only with the young ones, but also to prepare master's degree for the professionals in all the sectors. You know, we have many big international hotel companies based in Mallorca, so they share all the professional to try to chase the rest of the workers, because we put so much digitalization, so much investment, even in the kitchen, at the rooms and all the different parts of the hotel, that the workers didn't uh know how to try to to use or try the best of of that uh new technical investment. So when you try to find collaboration with public administration and private sector, if there is something that we are lacking, we have to create it, but uh always uh aligned with the public sector too. Because we have to uh help them if they are a bit uh delayed, because always the enterprises go um with a different speed. And we cannot say that public administration is not arriving if you don't give them a hand. I mean, we put a lot of investment in the different areas of Mallorca, and public administration didn't change a bit on the public spaces. So now they are trying to to do that, so the client is not coming out from a hotel four or five star and finds that the roads are not at the same level. I mean, we have to try to co-work together. Uh, we have uh companies uh doing very big important initiatives. Uh, very rapidly, I will just mention a big one, the five hotels together from the same company, they created a thirty-eight thousand square meters with eight thousand hundred photovoltaic modules. And um less than seventy percent of the energy produced uh is self-consumption right now. The rest is given back to share with with the rest. So we are trying to do that at the whole hotels, but of course, we don't have enough land to do the the one uh as that project. So we are trying to use, of course, our buildings, and the green transition is really making a big transformation, and mostly thanks for the UA funds. So in the last five years, well, uh mostly after the COVID, that uh is boosting the transition, which is very important for the islands too. And food is very important to know that from two thousand sixteen, we were working on trying to reuse that organic waste that we had from all the hotels to convert it in natural compost for our uh la- uh farmers, so they could produce local products, and we rebuy them for our buffets. So this is being now a successful uh project that started in two thousand sixteen. But to tell you the truth, at the beginning, when we were accompanying the company that was trying to do that initiative, it was illegal to do it. So we had to change also the norms at our Balearec uh government system to try to accompany those initiatives. And right now, many companies are on that, and other public, like public schools and other institutional organizations are also taking profit of that initiative. So we have to try to look forward, get moving, but we have to to take uh also into account the importance of the policymakers to to try to accompany that. And it does, it shouldn't take so many years, uh if it's possible, to try to take advantage of the opportunities that are arising right now. Also, hotel companies were working hand by hand with the farming cooperatives. I think it's really important, primary sector, to be very near the the hoteliers. And also, when we did so many work in progress, changing category of hotels, we had lot of waste tons from construction. So we did also another use on that for rural roads, garden in between roads, we were working a lot on that and working. So there is so many initiatives I would like to share, and also working a lot with the sustainable mobility. This is really a big challenge in our islands, but right now, we are trying, this is an example of water, it's a platform where at the located at the hotels where they can take a bicycle or a car, but just for some minutes or some hours, don't need to rent a car for the whole period of the guests that are staying there, because they don't use it like that. So just use it when it's needed. And thanks very much uh for listening, um thanks for, let me give you that perspective.
I would like, I would like to thank you for the presentation. And um now I open the list for colleagues, members of the Eco Section, to take the floor to make comments, to ask questions. You can use your system there to put your name on the list. Any more? Who would like to learn about islands or to tell about islands or share experiences with us from islands? Okay. Then um we have only two, Ben Riccio and who else, who is the other? Okay, then uh Ben Riccio, Malta, the first to take the floor.
Thank you, thank you, President. Um, I'm over here. I would like to ask once one question to all the people who have given us this presentation, including you, President. And if we would have this magic wand, where we will tell you what is the the most important thing that you would like to to happen in your area immediately um to benefit for your island? That is my 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 question. Thank you.
No, you're fine. It's uh, it's Peter Byrne. And one of the things I'd like to put to the panel is that if some good was to come out of COVID, what I actually saw living on an island is uh the islands off the coast of Ireland. So I'm thinking of places like the Aran Islands, and they really benefited when we start using technology, working from home, because suddenly other people start realizing that being on an island isn't isolating if you can use technology. So we're seeing a lot of repopulation. It's slow at the moment, but it's the first time that we've seen a corner turned where people can go to centers. where people can go to centers, access technology and work. So it's not possible all the time to have a good broadband speed for every house on an island, but it is within the compass of the Irish government to have good broadband speeds in centers that are easily accessible within islands. And I was just wondering if the panel had seen similar experiences in the areas that they represent. Thank you.
Then you are very satisfied with the islands. Okay, I will start giving the floor first to Mrs. Frontera. I go the other way now.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, just to answer the first question, I will say that to prioritize tourism in the EU, it is the most important thing, to give the value that the tourist industry gives to the European community, because we have not seen that. It's true that because of Covid, we have seen changes, small tendencies there, but it's not really what we were expecting. So I think we give a lot and we don't receive the same. At least, they are not listening to that. So that will be for the first question. And it's true that we have seen also on the Baleharic Islands, mostly out of season, how many workers came to work. So we were trying to adapt the rooms, the spaces, the apartments for the co-working specialty. It's not very high at the moment. We thought it may be a solution for the off-season months, but because of the problems of housing too and the demand recovery was very quick last year, I think we didn't find that balance. But we saw at the beginning a big change on that in 2021. So maybe there will be changes there. I think it's a good opportunity for the islands, because, of course, we are privileged to live in an island or at least I believe I'm very privileged and I will say that many people will love to come and work in Mallorca and be connected with the firm in other places. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Kehayoglu.
Thank you for the questions. Let me begin with answering to Mr. Riccio from Malta and greetings from Comino, a beautiful island. So what would be the most important aspect for us? Let small islands compete and become champions. And by this, I mean that the EU should define rules and criteria and let us run and compete. In the area of energy, for instance, three out of three awards given by the EU have been awarded to small islands in the last few years. This shows the potential that we have. An example from Greece. A few days ago, we came up with a program called Greco Islands. That's G-R-E-C-O Islands, 100 million budget. We want to attract another 50 and reach 150 million. I hope to see this implemented only in the case of small islands. The Dutch member, I believe, talked about Irish islands. Well, among the best examples I've had is visiting the Aran Islands. I've visited them, beautiful islands. This alone is an example to follow. Technology, yes, of course, we're in favor of technology, but not to the extent that it replaces humans on an island. We don't want to use remote control for everything. E-nomads, certainly an excellent opportunity there. Maria mentioned this before. But what do we do about finding housing accommodation on those islands? There is the well-known platform that makes accommodation available and there is a shortage of accommodation and there is the connectivity issue as well. We have to make sure that e-nomads will have access to the right services. If we solve these two problems, connectivity and housing, this would really provide better quality. Anybody wishing to work from a small island instead of a small apartment in a building, I'm sure their workout would be better, in fact. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Borg.
Basically, I will repeat some of the points already raised by Ms. Frontera and Mr. Kehayoglu. To reply to Mr. Riccio and also in directly reply to Mr. Byrne, what I would do, what I would like to do, whether if I had a magic wand, was what would be to change the structure of the economy of our islands. Most of our islands depend on tourism. The model which Ms. Frontera mentioned is the ideal model we should go for. We have to go for quality tourism, but not depend exclusively on it. So what I would like for islands is that there is investment in renewable energy projects, which I think are the way forward, and also on digitalization. It has been seen from experience that islands could serve as testbeds for digitalization and also for renewable energy projects. And from the experience which islands go through, we can then go to also change the economies of the whole continent of Europe to depend more on digitalization and also on renewable energy. This has also been seen lately in the importance of renewable energy in the context of the war in Ukraine. And we think islands can lead by big testbeds for renewable energy. Okay? Thank you.
I would like to thank you. Before I close the debate, I need to answer the question from my good friend Ben Riccio. Myself, what would be the magic thing I would like to see happening in the islands? For me, the magic thing is balance. Balance in what we do. We do not, and we should not have, as Mr. Borg said, monolithic economic directions. And we need a balance of socioeconomic development for those who live, first and foremost, in the islands and for those who visit the islands. So I think balance is missing in the islands. And for the small islands, the word neglect should disappear and they should be very much embedded in the agenda of the local, regional and international authorities and the European Union as the beautiful corners of our European Union. And of course, if we start talking about the law of the sea that Mr. Kehayoglu was using and other areas of discussion, then we find other very important dimensions in all these small pieces of our land territory, which has to do with the sea territory of our union. So colleagues, I would like to close this debate. I would like to first to thank our guests, the speakers and those of you who have taken the floor to express your views about islands. Our committee believes that the issue of insularity is very important and that dialogue between and with and between island communities is very essential for fostering proximity to the European project, building bridges between cultures, stimulating interest in decision-making processes and promoting the construction of the European Union itself. Islanders are citizens of the European Union and islanders have the same rights, the same demands and the same obligations like the other citizens and they deserve to have the same opportunities as well. All of us must ensure that islands receive the special attention that is required so they can overcome the barriers that insularity causes. It is high time we turn words and plans to concrete actions and deeds and make sure that islands receive what is appropriate in view of a balanced territorial development. Now that the discussion of the future of cohesion policy has started again, we need to highlight territorial headgaps, point to the needs and propose the dedicated policy actions that need to be directed to the islands. I would like to thank you all once again and I would like to thank Georgios Melias, Rafael Azaguedu and all colleagues from the Secretariat who have worked for this public debate today, those who have followed this debate online. And hopefully, the opinion we are going to discuss and vote on in September in our section will bring forward those issues in a period that is quite important for the whole of Europe, including those who are the areas we deal with. Thank you very much.
Stavros, would you like to add something?
So now we are going to break. It is planned to start at three. We start at three. We have three opinions to work with in the afternoon. Have a longer and well-deserved break. Thank you very much, everyone.